Danny Watts and Steve Combs, Jay Fenwick and Gary Childers down in Indiana. We'll give you each two minutes to tell the voters why you think they should vote for you. Then I'll be asking you questions, one minute each, and then we'll close it out with two minutes for you to summarize everything. Tracy here is our timekeeper. She will give you a fist to show you that you have 15 seconds left and an open hand to show you that your time is up. All right, we'll begin. Jason Cornet.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Jason Cornet. I'm running again for my position on the school board. I'm a parent, I'm a local here from Watauga County. Very excited about the opportunity to run again. Also pastor at church in Ash County. I'm a police officer in law enforcement for 19 years now, so I've worked with people in many different scenarios and situations. One of the biggest things that I look at in my life is being in public service. Pretty much everything that I've done has surrounded or been around public service. I enjoy that. I enjoy working with people, getting to know people and listening to people. I think that one of the biggest things that I've found the last four years is people, someone that's going to listen to them, take the time to listen to them. And I'm thankful and glad to do that. Being a local, this is home, this is where I'm from. Went to Bethel, graduated from Watauga High School, so this is the system I know and just so very thankful to be able to be a part of it, be able to serve it. I've thoroughly enjoyed the last four years, would love to have four more. Just love working with the folks here and I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right, Danny.
Hi, my name is Danny Watts. I've been here since 2005. I originally moved here from Winston-Salem. I attended college, University of North Carolina at Greensboro, and then I went on and got my master's degree at Wade Forest in theology. And I have been working with children from kindergarten up through college age for about 35 years, so I decided to run for school board, hoping that I can be able to do some good for the kids here in the county and to help our children to grow in a safe environment and to have some values that they can stand upon. Thank you.
Steve Combs. Good evening. It's good to be here with you. I want to thank the Boone Chamber and the Blowing Rock Chamber for hosting this event. And I want to thank all the folks that took the time to turn my radio on tonight, to listen to us. I love kids. I have two kids, they're in school right now in Watauga County, Watauga High School. I feel kind of like an incumbent here. I've done 12 years on the school board. I did from 2000 to 2012. During that period of time, we made a lot of great accomplishments. I was part of the team that helped build, knew Watauga High School. They had planned for the programs that are in that school right now, such as technology, the ROTC program. My two daughters, Victoria and Skylar, are outskating students at Watauga High School. My family has lived here at least seven generations in this county. We've always served the people of Watauga County. I'm not a taker, I'm a giver. And as we grew up, my dad told us that there's three things in life that you need to have. First thing for me is my spirituality. My spirituality is the most important thing in my life, serving God. That's the most important thing. My next important thing is my family. Without my family, I would not be able to do the things that I do each and every day. And the third thing is my community. We all live here in Watauga County. I don't look at this as a county, I look at this as a neighborhood, where we all live together, where we all have an investment. And I want to be part of your life each and every day. If you let me to your school board, you're going to have a guy that is out there every day fighting for you. You will find in your schools off and on. I love to talk to parents. I want to know what your problems are. On my card that I have sat, it says that I am about, not just students, but I am about kids and families. That's what makes up our school system, is kids and families. What affects kids, affects families. And if you let me to your school board, you will have someone that really cares about each one of you.
Jay Fenwick.
Good evening. I am Jay Fenwick and I'm running for school board. I'm currently on the board, serving a four-year term. I serve on a variety of committees, including the policy, facilities, calendar, technology, athletics and equity committees. I spent seven years on the Watauga Education Foundation, two as its president. I currently serve on the Green Valley Park Board of Directors for five years, three as the secretary. I spent 18 years, I'm not sure how many, on the Green Valley School PTA, one as treasurer and two as president. I've been a youth sports coach, Sunday school teacher, the husband and father of three boys who went through our schools here in Watauga County. I'm also CS professor, computer science professor at outstate. I believe a vibrant democracy depends on public service. When my wife and I moved here 25 years ago, and I love the saying I hear from other politicians, we got here as fast as we could. We love Watauga County and I want to do what I can to help it stay the jewel of the high country.
Gary Childers.
Hello, I'm Gary Childers. Wife and I have been residents of Watauga County since 1967. I grew up not far from here, about an hour from here in the foothills of Park County. Attended Appalachian State University. Had the privilege of serving four schools in Watauga County. Art and Park, was a teacher there, principal at Bethel, principal at Parkway, and wound up through retirement as principal of Watauga High School. Many of you know me, there is a good possibility I taught you or was your principal, or your parents' principal, or perhaps even for a few of you, your grandparents' principal. But I'm proud to have had the privilege to have served so many families and worked with so many behind your people in Watauga. My son and daughter graduated from Watauga High School. Since retirement, I've been an educational consultant, worked on many exciting projects in which are the state, and have been, and currently am the director of High Country United Way, where I continue to have the opportunity to serve the citizens of our community. Was appointed to the Board of Education in May of '17 to complete a term for a member who was unable to finish her term. It's been a privilege to serve on this board. I love the schools of Watauga County and love the opportunity to continue to serve.
All right, we'll begin with the questions. School security is a concern these days in light of recent shootings across the country. Right now, the county has three school resource officers, one for the high school. And I made a mistake in saying that the one in Blowing Rock was funded by a local NGO, it was actually funded by the town of Blowing Rock. So I want apologies for that. And then there's one to rotate among the other seven schools. There are two jobs available that are being interviewed right now, but they have not been filled. So how can we have one for each school? Danny, we'll start with you.
Well, I'll offer a resource officer at every school, but I think part of the problem we are seeing is, if you notice, anytime there's something happens at a school, it happens before when someone gets inside. If we could come up with a plan to help keep people out of the school before they get into school. And I have been working on a plan that I was going to turn into Johnson and Jordan about using community volunteers to put outside, like Safety Patrol, like elderly people or people like that, they don't have a weapon, they just have a radio, that they could communicate with the principal, with the school board, with the police department. And if something unusual happened at the school, they could let them know and maybe stop the intruder or anyone like that before they get inside the school. Because, once again, if we can stop them before they get into school, we can defeat the problem.
Steve Combs.
Thank you.
I look at this problem as a two-sided problem. I think many of the things that the school board's doing right now is good. I think with the doors and the security system, the ID system they're using right now, I think that's a good thing. One of the things, though, that I want us to be really careful about is the fact that we're trying to keep the bad people out, but at the same time, while we're keeping the bad people out, we're keeping the good people out. I've had people come up to me on various occasions, say in state. I mean, I used to volunteer at Cove Creek, or I used to volunteer at Bethel, but now it's just so hard for me to do this, I'm giving up on this. But I think one of the things that we need to do is we need to have SRO officers in every school. But I think we need to work through that process with our county commissioners.
Jay.
Well, absolutely, the county commissioners are going to end up paying for the school resource officers, so it's a prioritization between the school board and the county commissioners. As you mentioned, we did get a grant that the school board applied for, for two additional school resource officers. So we don't have a school resource officer in every school right now, but we have several very small schools, and they'll say a resource officer every single day, which is better than it's been in the past. But it's more than just school resource officers, because that is no guarantee. The tragedy in Parkland, Florida, they had school resource officers. So we can't trick ourselves into thinking that that's the magic bullet. There's no magic bullet. Security is a process, not a product. It's an ongoing discipline of hardening the schools, which we spent $350,000 this summer to do that. So I'm for school resource officers, but there's lots of other parts that need to be defended to this too.
Gary Childers.
The simple answer is to continue doing what is being done, and that is seek funding for the school resource officers locally through our county commissioners, through our town governments, and also through state resources, which all have been done, and I'm very grateful for the support that's come forward. The way we get the others a full-time officer is to continue with that same path. That's the way it happens. As is mentioned, though, school safety is not just one-dimensional. The idea of a school resource officer is extremely important. We need one in this day and time in every school. But we also need to continue the process of making it more difficult to have easy access to our schools. And school board has taken steps through the support of commissioners and state to harden, is the term we use now, the access to schools through several procedures and to increase security so that not just anyone can get in the school building. We also have to address it from the side of the students and people who want to hurt other people, and provide more support for young people who are troubled and try to have early interventions so we eliminate the potential for these kinds of disasters. And the fourth area, which is extremely important, is to do all this while still trying somehow to maintain our school's climate and culture as one that's inviting and nurturing to the children and welcoming to the community for those who want to come in for the right purposes.
Jason.
This is very passionate for me, or passionate mine, I've been looking forward to this question. This is definitely a community process or something that's going to take us all working together, not just the school system, not just law enforcement. It's a membership of all of those along with the county commissioners. Currently, we have one SRO funded by Blowing Rock, we have one funded by state funds through the Watauga school system, and then we also have three funded by Watauga County, one currently in the Watauga High School, and then the two more that's waiting to be filled. I believe it's important that those positions are filled through the jurisdictions in which they work. So that is where that needs to come through, the funding would need to come through that source, but I'll mention this as well. Back in September, we were able, many of us here tonight were able to speak to the House Select Committee on School Safety, and they were talking about the funding, where is that funding going to come from, where are we going to get it? I know that the North Carolina Educational Authority was mentioned, so I know the state is looking at this, and that way it would help keep it from being just a burden on the county itself.
All right, the next question, we'll start with Steve Combs. The school district has a number of capital needs. Would you please prioritize what needs to be done first?
Thank you. We have eight elementary schools and a high school. Right now, our two biggest needs to be able to replace, Valley Crusade Elementary School because it floods something terribly. It has a problem. And number two, our problem would probably be that we need to take care of building a new Harden Park School. Even back when I was on the school board from 2000 to 2012, we had so many penetrations in the roof of that school that it continuously leaks, and I think it continuously leaks now. Those two would be a great priority, but something else that we need to do in the process is we need to be able to go back and update and repair the existing schools we have, but we need to do that in a way that doesn't put a tax burden on our citizens.
Jay Fenwick.
So we've been talking about schools and new schools for a long time in this county, adding to schools, replacing schools. And with this board, we had finally hired an architect and gotten a comprehensive review of all of our facilities. And the architect has told us what needs to be done, and it's what Mr. Combs just said. We need to spend money to replace Harden Park and Valley Crusade Schools, because the renovation cost for those is even more than building a new school. For the other facilities, the renovation cost is less. Even though there's big population problems at Parkway, there's other issues. So we need to replace those two schools. And then there's ongoing maintenance at all the facilities, as Steve just mentioned. So the trick is going to be having a dialogue with our county commissioners, and we've already started to figure out how to enable that over the next 10 to 15 years. And earlier in some of the panels, there was mention of some numbers, $100 million is the number our architect mentioned, but that is at $2021, and we haven't even started, so those numbers are going to have to go up just because money costs always increase. So we have to be very cognizant of that. We need to start working on the plan, but we're working with the county commissioners right now to do that.
Gary Childers.
The first priority in terms of capital needs and planning would be to continue the work for making our buildings safe. And part of that comes under the, what we call the capital needs side or budget. We have two major components, capital needs and current expense. Current expense has to do more with instructional side of things. So first is to continue with the safety upgrades aggressively under the capital element part, those things like hardening the entrances and securing facilities and security cameras and so on. Second priority would be continuation of repairing, maintaining, upgrading, and where the needs exist to expand the schools as they exist. Then we come to our long-range planning, which is, as has been stated, called the architect's plan, or I believe it's a 13-year long-range plan now, calling for two new schools, Harden Park and Valley Crusade. So I think we should stay the course with that long-range plan.
Jason.
Yes, we hired a firm to come in and see, give us, fill us what our needs are. And what we have set up through this is our two most crucial is Valley Crusade and Harden Park's actual school rebuildings, reconstructions. There is currently ongoing needs that take place or needs in each of our schools. We look at Valley Crusade primarily because of the flooding, recent flooding that's already been mentioned, and then also just the high traffic that we have from Harden Park. So even though there are older structures within the school system, these needs are being placed where they are because of flooding and because of the high traffic. Something I'm very appreciative of, during the recent tax increase, what we were able to do is set by, or set aside 1.5 million per year from those taxes that's going to go toward this long-term, this 13-year plan. Everybody wants to know, what are we going to do, how are we going to do this? Well, this is one of the ways that we want to do that. That money is not to be used for our current capital plans, but it is for our long-term plans. I was looking over this today and thinking about it, and maybe thinking of something that my dad told me, plan your work and work your plan, and I think we need to stay the course of what we're doing.
Danny.
Yes, I think Valley Crusade is preeminent in what we need to work on first, and then we just need to maintain the other schools until we decide we need to build another school and where, because we have to keep everything maintained to keep the kids in school and keep the kids safe, so we have to work with management. And I'm for doing anything we can to help the children. I don't want to raise taxes, but if it helps the kids, maybe we should, but I don't really think we should, because I think if we as a board and county commissioners were to put our heads together, we could do this without raising taxes, and anything that we can do to help the kids, we should do.
All right, we'll start with Jay Fenwick on this next question. Teacher turnover is increasing. Millennials won't commit and retirements will increase with baby boomer demographic bubble. Some are finding better opportunities out of state. What's your vision for teacher recruitment and retention?
Actually, that's what I've been telling people all day today at the polls, about getting, recruiting and retaining the very best teachers. So the thing is that our turnover is actually lower now than it has been the past few years, and that's because we're working really hard to make Watauga the best place to learn and to work. Our enrollment has increased about 5% in the past four years. So we're sort of bucking those trends that may be your state or nationwide. We're seeing people come into our system, so that's a good thing. But recruiting quality teachers is an ongoing problem, and so we work very hard at that. We begin the process very early. We have a crackerjack human resources team to help do this, so I think we're doing very well.
Gary Childers.
The, we're blessed that we live in a community that has a major university with an outstanding teacher education program. It's always been a source of providing some of the finest teachers there are to select from in our schools. So we're better off than most other areas. I know there are areas of the state that cannot attract qualified teachers, and we're fortunate to be in an area that does already have a pool of qualified people who come here to school and they love this community and they want to stay and work here and contribute. Beyond that, though, what causes teachers to want to come and work here is that we have a wonderful school system. It is a great place to teach. Why is it a great place to teach? Because we have wonderful kids, we have wonderful families, we have wonderful quality of life. All of those help us recruit people. We have to maintain all of those factors to recruit, to keep recruiting wonderful teachers. Once we get them here, we have to support them. We have to support them through their work in the classrooms, providing the materials they need, provide a safe place to work, and then the materials and then support from administrators, which is the main reason beginning teachers leave is they don't get enough support and discipline early on. So all of those things help us recruit and retain the teachers.
Jason Cornet.
Well, money, I think, is always a common denominator issue, and I think that we can continue to work on our local supplements. But in thinking about this question, I think it's good that we clearly are having a positive attitude and gratitude and show our teachers how much we appreciate them. That's one of the things that just in my career itself, the money's not always where it's supposed to be or where you'd like it to be, but the environment that you create or the environment that you work in or you work to produce means a whole lot. If we can show them, our teachers, our educators, everyone in our school system, how much we appreciate them, listen to them, and try to work through these issues, I think that would go a long way. Being an officer and some of the teachers I've come to know, I think being in law enforcement, being in education in some ways is similar. I've never heard a teacher, I've never heard a law enforcement officer say, I got into this profession for the money. They get into it for the service. They want to serve people, they want to better their community by working with children. Law enforcement want to work with the community to keep it safe or work through family needs. So I think it's a combination of us all working together. One thing I want to make mention of too, being ranked number two by NESH in our school system, the number two school district in North Carolina, that is because we do have the best educators. And I just want to take the time to thank everyone for what they do in Watauga County Schools.
Danny.
We have wonderful teachers here in Watauga County, and to retain those teachers, we need to pay them an excellent salary, and the average salary for teachers in North Carolina has, the last time I checked, was $45,000. And that's pretty good paid for a job that they do an excellent job on. And I don't think money is the source of people leaving. I think it's probably more than anything, teachers not getting support from their principals and discipline in the classroom. I had a teacher tell me, I'm sorry, not a teacher, a young boy tell me the other day that he was being bullied at his school and he's gone to his principal seven or eight times, and his principal would do nothing about it. And it's affecting him in the classroom, it's affecting his attitude in his classroom. So I think we need to pay our teachers what they're worth, but we also need to have our principals help them out in the classroom too.
Steve Combs.
This has been an ongoing problem even when I was on the school board. When I was on there, what we had done is, we went out and looked at every school system in the state of North Carolina. We looked at what they were able to offer that teacher, that beginning teacher to their system. And one of the things that we found out is, this is a competition between school systems. And we looked at the amount of supplements and the offerings that we could give teachers here, and we've got to be competitive in our, with our county commissioners in raising the teacher supplements in our county. The next thing that we need to do is that we need to look at ways of working with businesses to provide things for beginning teachers. When they come out of college, they have a high debt from being able, from going to school. Well, I think if we work with our local businesses to offer them perks, if we work with our county commissioners, one of the things that we had looked at was being able to find a way that we could offer beginning teachers low-income housing. Thanks.
All right, the next question goes to Gary Childers. What kind of oversight should be given to homeschooling and charter schools?
See, the tough one for me to start with. Homeschools and charter schools. I'm familiar with both structures of education, and I will quickly say that I don't think enough oversight is given to homeschools and to charter schools. Let me quickly qualify that by saying that there are many good homeschools, and I applaud those folks who want to homeschool their children and who do it well. There are many good charter schools, and I applaud those charter schools because they have the right mission and are doing what they do for the right reasons. But unfortunately, it's been my experience to observe that some homeschool situations are not good, and this is speaking from personal experience. I haven't had, here in Watauga, we have a good charter school, so I can't say it's not good here. Charter schools have probably a better oversight system. I'm confident to do that homeschool situations. Very small staff in Raleigh over all the homeschool situations in North Carolina. Doesn't require much to be able to teach your children at home, all their qualifications. Charters have a bit more structure to them. I think if we're going to allow this to happen, we need to provide more oversight, and it starts with having more people in Raleigh providing that oversight, which is going to cost somebody some money somewhere, but that is needed. In terms of charters, just to make sure that there's an adequate structure in Raleigh to provide good oversight, so that charters are doing what they're supposed to do, is providing a positive alternative for children and their families and not just an escape from reasons, or reasons that are not why we should be subsidizing charter schools.
Jason.
And I understand that all children, everyone learns differently or has, or have different needs or different services that they need, but I think that any time that state funding, federal funding is being allotted, there needs to be a standard that is set, a minimum standard, or a standard that needs to be set that has to be followed by all. If the Watauga school system has to follow this standard, then homeschoolers need to follow this standard. Charter schools need to follow this standard to put everyone on an equal plane. Even if it's a different service, the standard should be held to the same plane.
Danny.
I have taught at a charter school and I have taught at public school, and I have children in my children's ministry at my church who are homeschooling, and I am a proponent of homeschool, I am a proponent of charter schools, because I think they do a wonderful job in helping the children, some children who are outside the system because they do not learn the way that others do. Also, it's, a lot of people are doing homeschooling now because of the safety conditions at schools, and it may be something that school boards around the state wish to look at, or why so many people are homeschooling, because they're afraid to put their children in school.
Steve.
Well, I'm running for office in the public school system, so I must be a proponent of public school. But at the same time, I'm not blocking what goes on in charter schools, I'm not blocking homeschooling. But I do think there needs to be some standards set there where if you're going to homeschool your kid, that you have the qualifications in order to do that.
Jay.
I'm for parents and families being able to make the choices that they feel they need to make. But as a proponent of public schools, I just wish that the state would require the same sort of accountability and the same sort of requirements that we have on the charter schools and on the homeschools. High Country is blessed to have a homeschool association that helps homeschools learn how to do that, but there's a ripe opportunity, as Gary mentioned, for abuses in parenting families that don't know how to homeschool. Charter schools have their own boards that govern Charter schools have their own boards that govern them individually, and there is some oversight from Raleigh, but again, they do not face the same sort of standards that we face, so it was just like a level playing field.
All right, well, let's wrap things up. Each of you will have two minutes to tell the voters why they should vote for you. We'll start with Jason for now.
Well, again, I just want to thank everyone listening at home. I'd like to thank both the chambers for the opportunity, for putting this on, Mark, this evening, appreciate you being here. This is a passion for me, being a parent is first and foremost, the most important thing for me as far as running for the board. My son is 16, he's a student at Watauga High School, so looking to try out for basketball, and just, I've really enjoyed going back through the school system, seeing it from this perspective and having a son here. So really, to me, it's a sense of responsibility and accountability. Being in law enforcement, being a police officer, I think I have a lot to offer, especially in the horrific events that's taken place. School safety has moved to the forefront. This, having a school resource officer in every school has been something that's been important to me back in 2014. That was one of my first platform issues, probably one of my main platform issues. The way I look at things, any time a situation takes place, the question we need to ask ourselves, have we done everything we could have done to prevent this, to protect our kids? And if we haven't, if we can't say yes to that, then we've got a lot of work to do. So I'm still a huge proponent of that as we move forward also with all our school facilities. One thing I pride myself on is being a good listener, taking time, if you're sounding bored, listening to concerns, I'll tell you right now, from school closings, is it going to be closed? Why is it closed? It's sunny over here, it's snowing over here. I get calls regularly, but I enjoy that. I enjoy talking to people, I'm thankful that people find me approachable enough to do that. Being able to be a conduit from this level, the representative level, all the way up to our superintendent, who I think highly of. This has been a wonderful experience for me, and I think that is due to the strong leadership that we have at the top. I'd like to continue to work with that, just kind of looking through. Again, one of the things I want to do is thank each of the candidates for being here tonight as well, and them taking interest and taking part of this. And I just believe we need to focus on what is reasonable, working with one another, working with the county commissioners, the state level, the federal level when it comes to that, being reasonable and working with one another. Again, my name is Jason Cornet, and I'm asking for your vote.
Danny Watts.
Thank you for being here tonight. It's an honor to see each and every one of you, and I stand for safety first and conservative values. About three weeks ago, I had a mother come up to me, and she was talking to me about a book her child had to read at the high school, and she showed me the book, and some of the words in the book I would not repeat to you and you guys who are adults. And I do not think that's something that high school kids need to be reading, or even junior high school kids need to be reading, because we need to have some values to stand up for the things that we are proud of. All too often, we think that money's going to stop the problem, but sometimes we just need to stand up and do what's right. And I am a proponent of a common core curriculum. I think it's too much government. Alex DeTocqueville said in his Federalist Papers, laissez faire, that means less is more. Sometimes we need to let government get out of our lives and let us do our community thing and learn how to trust each other and go from there. My name's Danny Watts, and if you want to vote for me, I'd appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Steve Combs.
Thank you. As you know, my name is Steve Combs. I've been on the board before. If elected to the board again, I bring 12 years of experience. I bring the opportunity to serve you again. I took six years out of being on the school board because I had small kids. I wanted to be able to spend time with my kids and see them do some things that I wouldn't otherwise be able to do. I love being on the school board, I love serving. If you elect me to the school board, you'll have someone that will always be there for you, that you can always call, that will help you solve your problems, and if I can't solve your problem, I'll find somebody that can. Thank you.
Jay Fenwick.
I am Jay Fenwick, and I am asking you to reelect me to the school board. Watauga Schools has been a really good system for quite some time. In fact, there are some proud and productive graduates up here right now. And in my four years on the board, I see us approaching a tipping point. My Chamber of Commerce friends will probably know this reference better than most, but there's a classic management book by Jim Collins called Good to Great. Collins speaks about seven characteristics that enable good companies to push through the barrier to become truly great companies. It's a fantastic read, and I highly encourage it. And I see Watauga Schools exhibiting many of these characteristics. I see us on the cusp of being even much better than we are today. We are using data to inform and drive our decisions. We have a new and strong strategic plan that is helping us identify our strengths and areas to focus on. Enrollment is up, graduation rate is up, pre-K has expanded, test scores are improving. We are tops in the state in some testing areas, like middle school language arts, and we know we need to hone in on fourth and fifth grade math. And our efforts are beginning to accumulate incrementally in what Collins calls the flywheel effect, that's kind of like compound interest. But the most important factor that Collins describes to be great is a top-level leadership. No organization becomes great without top leadership. Until just four to six years ago, Watauga Schools had many leadership challenges, six superintendents in less than 10 years, replacements of central services directors, insignificant board turnover. But now this has stabilized into what Collins would call humble, level-five leadership. We've got the right people on the bus now, and I'm asking Watauga citizens to let me continue this great work. And I can sum all this up in three words, stay with Jay.
I love Watauga County schools. I love the young people that are part of the Watauga County schools. I love the families of those young people. Education has been and continues to be a calling for me. I've dedicated my professional and much of my personal life to serving the young people of Watauga County. I'm told this is the point at which it's okay to brighten on yourself a little bit. I feel like I bring to this wisdom from 33 years of experience in the trenches and six years as an educational consultant, working with some of the most exciting projects in the western end of the state, and from helping some schools underachieving to turn themselves around. I bring knowledge from being a lifelong learner, completing my doctoral degree at the age of 66, I believe it was, in 2013. I'm very proud of that. Education is important to me. And also, I have caring and compassion from my heart, and that comes from my mother, who insisted that that be part of our family creed. I'm Gary Childers, and I want to continue to serve, and I will appreciate your vote.
Ladies and gentlemen, we use our candidates for the Watauga County School Board.